Good evening, it's Ann.
Yeah, it's.
Hi, Ann.
Hello.
We are here.
Ann, how's the weather?
Um, high of eighty-five, low of eighty-two, high of eighty-five, low of eighty-two.
Good evening, everybody.
Hey, Charlie.
Welcome back.
I think so. What's what?
It's been a pleasure to meet you.
You too.
How are you doing, August?
Good.
How are you there?
Yeah, good to see you. Could be back in the Northwest.
It is.
Just in time for the cool weather.
That's why we've been here. We've been here most of the summer, but.
You just choose to go out of town when we haven't either.
Yeah. Take it personally.
Yeah. You just wanna like, oh, I'm in these extravagant locations, you know, just. Slumming it here in this resort.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we feel, we feel that.
Yeah, I know. Roughly.
Somebody has to do it.
Do you have a good summer?
Uh, I think so.
Happened fast.
It went, it did go really fast.
Our summer was full of grandchildren, so it went fast and loud.
You're lucky to have some good topics.
Oh, so you're making copies of our packet? Yeah, I didn't print mine, so. I read it, but I didn't print it.
All right, Charlie.
Good. Helping Rob paint his house, that was my big. Good house painting weather this week, unfortunately. Put it off all.
Yeah, it gets too wet.
Yeah, but this week is nice.
I think we have a quorum, I don't know, we haven't heard anything from Tony. But. Ann is a sign-in sheet, you know, we.
Yeah. Another thing.
Yep, I'm here.
You have Ann, we have Charlie, and we have August. So let's call our meeting to order. And. Start off by going through our opening statements, we, we are. Online, so folks can join us via Zoom. They can also join us via conference call. We ask that the commenters raise their hand and be acknowledged. By, you know, get Wes's attention or mine, and. We'll, we'll acknowledge you and let you address what we have here on the agenda. You know, we've never had any disruptive individuals, but if we do, I guess you make, you could be required to leave. And we could recess the meeting if, if necessary, but. If you're with us online, the tools are star six to mute and unmute, so you can talk to us via online. And star nine to raise your hand, so. Are there any questions on those procedures at this point? Great. We're at public comment for items that are not on the agenda, do we have anybody here who would like to offer comments? For an item that is not on our agenda for tonight?
Bye, just don't seem to have one.
Hearing, no one, seeing no one raising their hand. Let's go on to our minutes for our September eighth meeting.
They look fine, I'll move approval.
Got a motion in a second to approve the minutes, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, aye, motion carries. All right, our new business is basically continuing our conversation of vacation rentals and. I put together a discussion draft that. And Wes and I have had a chance to talk about it earlier in the week. And based, it's based on the conversation that, that Charlie, you and Tony had with Ben in that meeting. And then the subsequent meeting that Ann and I had with, with Ben. In terms of what we've heard, what we know. And the purpose of this document is sort of a status report and I guess a concurrence request from the city council. As you know, Ben has resigned, as has Tiffany, so. We didn't, I didn't want us to let this languish, because we've had public interest in this and. We wanted to continue the, the momentum moving ahead, so I tried to compile. From the ordinance and from the notes Charlie, you and Tony had, and from the notes that Ann gave me and from my notes. To put together. This, this little paper, and it's. Open for review and comment, if I don't have something right, or you think we need to change something. You know, that's certainly what I'd like to hear, and then their next steps here was. Basically asking the, the city council for their concurrence, and then we'd like to go out and do, you know, some additional public outreach. In terms of a listening session with folks, bring folks to the table for they, for us to know what they think. And I think our last meeting, we talked about public outreach, maybe as we had thought, well. Do we just go to folks who operate? A vacation rental and their immediate neighbors, or do we look more broadly at the community in the, in the sense that we had at that point was. We really wanted a broader, a broader outreach, so there's a couple of ways to do that, we didn't define that. In our last meeting, so that's, it's an open topic as well, but. With that.
Well, I'll start off and just sort of summarize, I mean, I think Jeff, you captured. You and Wes captured the discussions that had been taking place, both when we had people come from the community and say. Hey, you gotta pay attention to this, and that's what got this started, it wasn't something that sprang out of our heads, we, we heard from people. And then, you know, we, we, we sort of looked at this issue and said, you know. What's practical for the city to do about regulating short-term rentals, because there's. Even less staff than usual right now, and there's never a lot, so we can't, we can't be, you know, have a big complicated administrative. Structure for dealing with even a modest number of, of short-term rentals, and so the, the focus was really shifted from. You know, a, a, a. A focus on fire and life safety, which is still matters, to a focus on, on preserving the city's housing stock and limiting the impact of short-term rentals. Doesn't mean we don't pay any attention to, to fire and life safety, but we basically shift that to the owner's responsibility, and. They have to deal with the county building inspector or anybody else that, that, their own insurance and everything else. But the, the big, I think the big plays here are saying, we're gonna have a numerical cap, we're gonna, we're gonna. Close the barn door before the horse gets out and keep Stevenson from having a large percentage of our housing stock taken up. As short-term rentals, what's large, we don't know, but other cities have said five percent, and so we said, yeah, that seems reasonable, let's stay under that. And then, we don't really want. People sort of hoovering up housing to become a business in the neighborhoods. We want to limit that, so we're saying, you get to have one in your residence, and you get to have another one, and that's it. And future licensees, the ones that are out of town owners now get to, get to continue grandfathered in. But future licensees need to be residents of the city, that we're not interested in being a. Investment location for people that want to have short-term rentals, and, and again, some of those are kind of, you know, somewhat. Bolder moves than we've made on these issues in the past, we, we have seen other cities use some of these elements. So I think, you know, I think this is, to my, to my eye, this is putting on the table what we've been talking about, so thank you. For doing that, and it's really, you know, August, your reaction and Ann and your, you know, anybody else's reaction on the commission and the community's reaction. Is this what we want to do or not, or is this what we want to even put forward to the city council? Because we want to see if, if, if they think we're barking up the right or wrong tree here. But I think this, this captures what I, I'd hoped that we could put forward.
Yeah, I agree with Charlie on that, I, I think the, the fire and life safety was kind of like. Our entry into being able to control that in some way, and so. You know, this creates, I think, a much better rationale. And seems to have some support, you know, within the community, so. I think it's, it's a good stuff, and it follows the same. As similar communities in Hood River and Cascade Lock, so it's not like we're just creating something out of the air. You know, it seems to be. A common problem for all of these smaller cities.
Yeah, whether we see it Hood River, or whether we see it down on the coast, you know, a lot of these communities are, are having, you know, vacation rental.
Yeah.
It's growing and, and are trying to, to adapt to those, and it, it's kind of unique, in my mind, because. It is really a commercial use in a residential zone.
It is.
And, and we already allow some sort of semi-commercial uses in a residential zone, but as conditional uses. And so, this is, this is kind of a hybrid, it's not really a conditional use, it is conditioned in terms of the requirements. But there's not an individual, you know, planning commission hearing and an individual. Conditional use permit issued to each one, so it, it is a hybrid in, in, in that sense.
Yeah, but there is what they, they call in regulations a prescriptive path, if you do these things, if you meet these criteria, you get the license and. Go on your short-term rental, but we don't have to send people out to look at it, and we don't have to, you know, get sign-offs from the neighbors that it's okay. Is that you follow this prescriptive path, if you're a resident here and you want one or two of these. And, and you know, and you agree to meet fire and life safety requirements, here's your license, and if we have complaints, you might lose it.
Yeah.
And I think too, Charlie, you touched on this, was trying to relieve some of the burden on city staff, and that's where we came to inspections. In other words, having the operator, the owner, actually, you know, can have, have an inspection done. One of the questions that was raised at our last meeting was, what are the inspection requirements? And I, I, we still don't have a good definition of what that is, I mean. Obviously, you're not going to have the same inspection requirements that you have for a facility like Skamania Lodge, you know, even though this is a lot situation. But there is no, there is no prescriptive standard. For this, there are some, in, in the ordinance, it does refer to some fire safety standards. I've never seen them, so I don't know whether they exist or not.
That was, that was the only kind of catch-all, being able to do any enforcement activity. Was because of the fires here.
Yeah.
But otherwise, it was, it was just kind of a blank slate on, you know, what do you do with this, and if it's. You know, if it's business and you're renting it to somebody outside, then it's, you know, you take on that responsibility of providing a level of safety. And so that was, that was our only entry to that.
So if the, if the, if the owner-operator has an inspection done, files an inspection, you know, with results with the city. It's their responsibility to maintain it, to pay the taxes, to, you know, to. You know, meet all those requirements, so again, it doesn't become a burden. On, on city staff, and it is really something probably that the owner is, is best adapted at doing anyway, I think, in terms of running a business.
And whatever platform they're on, whether Airbnb or VRBO, you know, they're going to require more than we would.
Yeah.
And certainly, insurance is going to require working smoke detectors and egress and, you know, those things. And you, you don't do those at your peril if you're, and, you know, if you're renting out your house, part of your house or the cottage next door, so. I think that was why we thought the city could step back from trying to be, you know, really into that issue. And leave that to the inspector, this high private inspectors and, and the owners and their platforms. Ann is quiet, she's.
Are you, are you with us, Ann?
My hand is right, my hand's been raised, so I'll just unmute myself anyway. No, first of all, I, I wanted to say to Jeff, thank you, this was such a comprehensive draft that really. Put out exactly what had been done previously and what we're looking for now, so I really appreciate your time doing that. Um, yeah, I, I think fire safety is one that we, the city really needs to, that needs to be on our checkoff list. My concern with all of this is, depending on what's going forward with the city. Who in the city is going to? Get the application, approve the application, how much time is that going to take, because we are trying to limit the administrative. Time on this, so that, that's my only thing with all of this, is how do we really limit but make sure that it's sent correctly?
Well, that might be a moment for you to make some comments, Wes, about what do you think this is practical, I mean, you're hoping it would be a matter of the existing owners are going to have to report in.
Right, but, but I think.
Have to check in, so.
Right, yeah, well, I mean, at some level, no matter what, there's going to be some staff work required. And so, one thing we're looking at, and with the shuffle of the planning department, is hiring the permit and. Records manager role, and this seems to squarely fit with that, is that they would handle all permits, applications, you know. That sort of thing, and so I think this is right within their wheelhouse, and the reason we were looking at this position, and it's something we're going to talk with the. The council about, is that there has been a, a, you know, quite a few complaints about the process speed and the interactions, and so. This position is dedicated to. Really owning that space and making sure that, that an application or a permit. Goes through the lifecycle properly and at the right speed, and so I think with that position in place versus the setup we've had previously, I think. It's well within their wheelhouse to take this on, and also if we needed to expand enforcement somehow, I, I'm not. Saying, you know, to do fire inspections and all that, but if we needed to keep a better tab on the. On the, the vacation rentals in town, I think this person would be suited to do that.
Now, when we go into next steps, I mean, obviously, when we laid, laid out these policy recommendations, they are fairly general in nature, it, it's certainly not ordinance language. Or proposed ordinance language. And based on our last meeting, it was having something we could take out to the public and have them respond to. Without investing a lot of time in terms of drafting a specific ordinance, so. You know, that's why we have these, these bullet points, is again, it's something that. Have people's attention, get them to respond and see whether or not that's what they, what they want.
Yeah, um, one thing I just thought of, and I don't know if it's quite as relevant here, but I know that in the discussion about short-term rentals on the coast, when I was working over there. If, if, if emergency preparedness was also a big topic in terms of requirements for short-term rentals, so. Go bag or, or supplies for, and, and for a natural disaster or something like that, I know it's probably different being on, on the Oregon coast with. Cascadia than, you know, big earthquake, but I didn't know if that was something applicable here or something we wanted to address. As we're thinking about it.
My, my opinion is no, in that we're not requiring, or even actively encouraging. City residents to do that, even though it's a good idea.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, we might want to start with charity begins with home, you know, we're starting with everybody else. And that being a little playful here, but, you know, we're talking about, we hope no more than five percent of the city's housing stock here, so the other ninety-five percent, you know, might want to get about what you're talking about.
Right.
But I would say, if they do, if, if we, if we have a general effort in that direction, it'll probably trickle into some of these units, but.
But it'll make sense at that time.
Yeah.
But I also think, I mean, probably what is our single greatest risk is probably wildfire on, on the peripheries of town. And you're going to see those, those warnings, you know, be prepared, go now sort of situation. And so, those folks are going to be, if they're in a. You know, vacation rental.
Yeah.
They're going to be, be right in the midst of, of those evacuation orders as they come out, so.
And I think part of, part of the benefit of this is its emphasis on. You know, if you want to have a short-term rental, you gotta be a resident here, I mean, most, most of the renters, or most of the people operating these will be residents here. So it's the cottage next door, like down the street here, it's, you know, the ADU, it's the basement apartment, so odds are those, those owners are. Quite possibly around when something happens.
Yeah, and I, and I think that, that really squares, I think, with what we heard from the public, even though we didn't have a lot of folks here. That was a pretty consistent message that we got back was, you know, hey, you don't want to lose the character of our neighborhoods. You know, we don't want a lot of these, but we really want to know who's, you know, our neighbors are operating these, so. I think that's.
Yeah, that was another thing I was going to say, Jeff, and I think Ann said it as well, I, I think you not only captured our discussion, but I think it, it, it is responsive. To what we originally heard from people in the community, said, you know, please do something about this, I think we, we have done something close to what they had in mind, if we do this.
So, I mean, again, this is a working draft, but I'd like to put it, you know, as a memo. From the planning commission and, and Wes, I guess a few. Thing, but from the planning commission, Wes, to the city council. So they can come back and sort of on this next step, and, and that's what I really would like to focus on at this point in time. We want to take this basic document and, and, and share our thoughts and, and background with the city council now. And say, hey, what we'd really like to do is broaden the, the public, you know, involvement in conversation and. Have any feedback from the city council in terms of what we're thinking about, but then proceeding along that line. And doing a, you know, we've talked about. Doing a public workshop, you know, here, or we talked about doing a postcard mailing or something, or something online. But something where we can, again, reach out. Because this reminded me, and I was talking to Liz about this the other day, when we talked about. I, I, I'm not sure that, Charlie, you were on the planning mission, I think August was, and we were looking at changing densities in some of the zones. And we had a, we had a, a pretty significant response from the public saying. Hey, you know, that, that can, that's going to affect the character of our neighborhood, you know, it's going to change it, and there was, there was a concern, so. I think trying to do that broader outreach, or at least letting people know that we're, we're doing this is going to. I think trying to do that broader outreach, or at least letting people know that we're we're doing this is going to be important.
Right, and and this is something I've talked to. The Chamber of Commerce about and and the Downtown Association, because I know that this. On the surface seems to just involve the the homeowners and people visiting, but it goes so much further than that, especially with the businesses and. The and the 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 amount of housing stock here and and being able to find workers who can who have affordable housing, and so. They were uh willing to uh. Spread the word as well, so it could get them in on the conversation.
Yeah, good. Yeah, I mean, what I hope we hear back from the city council, Jeff, is say. Yeah, this looks like something we'd like you to you, the planning commission, to take out to public discussion, and we do. A workshop, but you know, and and invite those folks in that we've heard from on the issue and invite the licensees. And and make it generally known to people beyond that. And and I don't think we're going to have a huge number of people, maybe not as many as we're interested in the density issue, but we'll have some.
Oh, sure.
Uh, because we did before, so I think we want to make they get a chance to come in and say, you know, this meets the Goldilocks test or doesn't. Um, and uh, you know, and let us know if this is right. And then then maybe by that point, it. It could be in ordinance language, you know, by the time we have a public workshop on it, but that could go either way on that.
Well, yeah, you know, or we or we wait until we have that and then and then have a hearing on the on the ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, my concern oftentimes when you go through the very legalistic structure of ordinance, it's pretty. Pretty tough to get.
Off putting, yeah.
Well, yeah, it can be.
Well, and I appreciate that we're we're going forward with this as much that, you know, Jeff Jeff and I meeting with Wes and the last. Um, planning commission meeting with Ben, Ben was that week taking this to the city council, so I really don't want it to get dropped. So I appreciate everybody's. Really going forward with this and thinking thoughtfully about it.
Good.
Is it possible to ask? I want to guys have your opportunity here.
Yeah.
Um. What I've noticed. Oh, yeah, thank you for that reminder. Uh, that rock cities live here in town. Um. So one of the things I've found just a little confusing. Is what five percent represents, how many units that represents. I saw I've seen in documents. Uh, different numbers.
I think it's about thirty five or forty, right?
Yeah, it started out at thirty seven or thirty. I think there's some reference in here to that, and now it's down to twenty three or some different number. I would, and I may have misloaded the number. Um, because there's two or three documents out there that show up with different numbers. I would expect that to be the case because I would expect the numbers to change over time, right? Somebody's been doing this for a while, it's not working, they're going to do something else, or you have new folks that want to, I think, are. Neighbors just up the hill from us. Just recently got a permit to do this, so I would expect some variation. Uh, and kind of what's the denominator in this calculation?
Right.
That would be useful to know, just some basic facts that people, so you're working with the same numbers might. Might be how would help me uh just an understanding um kind of. Um. How many households are you talking about multi? Do you include multifamily towns in that calculation? Just little things like that. Uh, might be useful. Um, the only is, so I thought the documentation that was provided was really helpful. Uh, I think I. I think I saw something that you and one other member put together, and then Jeff, I think I read some notes from you.
Right.
Uh, very helpful to understand. Um, the thing that seemed to be missing was what the economic value to the city was. I mean, is it? Tiny, is it, you know, how does it compare to other lodging that is more traditional lodging? I mean, you think of the. Uh, the Schumania Lodge, those sorts of things. Might be helpful just to make sure that people, you know, go away with a little more information, a little clearer understanding.
Yeah.
The five percent thing, I'm not that familiar with this conversation. I'm a little. I'm kind of here because of housing in general, I have kind of an interest there.
Right.
Um. Five percent. Everybody else is doing it, so that's a good number. I mean, I don't know how you come up with a number on that. I really don't. But any articulation about who else is doing that might be helpful from people to understand.
That's great, thank you.
So, but that's what occurs to me because I've, like I said, and and I get it, I get it, but. If you're going to start saying to people, no, you can't do this. You hit the caps. You might want to have some documentation as to. How you came to that.
Yeah.
And if we've we've had a conversation on that on that very topic, because. You know, right now we have twenty three, you know, either fully or partially licensed. And just by looking at, and we were using single family residences as as the basis. And that's about two and a half percent. Of the single family residences, but one of the things we talked about was. Rather than a a five percent figure, which you end up having to recalculate every time someone comes in, because there's going to be new new additional. Right, uh, structures made, is just adopting. A fixed number, pick a number, say that's it, you can always go back and revisit that number. But rather than having to go back through with census tally of houses each time someone comes in, just to say you're within that five percent. Um, you know, is is a bit, just a bit more cumbersome.
Yeah, let people know that that the number we pick is about five percent.
Yeah.
Because that seems to be kind of the standard approach, but I think you write some more quantitative info here about where what's where's this grounded?
Yeah, so it's some context, I mean, how did we come to this number? Might might be a useful.
Yeah, it's helpful.
I mean, I. What happens when you fall below that? You reopen the opportunity for people um.
Short answer to that one is yes, as long as we, my understanding of this is as long as we haven't reached the cap. And you walk in the door and you want to do one, and you meet the criteria, here's your license, and you know, we'll see you next year.
Right.
Um, if we're at the cap, sorry, we're at the cap, the city council's established a cap, and they'll revisit it someday, but we don't, we're not going to permit any more of these until. They do, or people give them up. Um, so it is a little bit arbitrary, but the more we can ground it in. You know, it's about five percent of the city's housing stock. We're doing this because we're trying to preserve the housing stock, where people want to live and work here. Um, and and, you know, and here's how we got to those numbers. Yeah.
And I think in our 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 basic assumptions is that the twenty three that are out there now. Will still be there. I mean, they're grandfathered there again. And so. You know. What do you want that? That cap to be? Uh, and how often do you review that cap too?
And if you. If you withdraw for a year, then you're kind of a new. You know, they're they're all sorts of wacky little things that you end up having to deal with.
Yeah, no, that's right. If it's an annual license and you decide to give it up and we're at the cap. You're kind of high and dry for a while. And again, it's a little arbitrary, but. Other cities have done it this way, and and our great. Strength on this issue is that we're doing it early. We got twenty three of these for goodness sakes, you know, it's not having a big effect yet. So we're closing the barn door, or at least, you know, changing the size of the bar door before the horses are all gone.
Yeah, in other words. We're not reacting to a problem, we're trying to be proactive, I guess, in terms of laying out something that. You know, set some good expectations and folks understand.
I think besides the number, also have. Some system in place so that there's a waiting list.
Hmm.
So if if you do not meet the criteria to maintain your license. And we're at the cap, whoever's on the waiting list. Like.
That's a good idea.
Keep your licenses active. That goes away, and the next person is waiting in line, and are more than willing to meet the criteria that we've set, and that'll. Kind of create a uh. You know, inspire people to to stay on the right side of stuff.
Hmm, that's a great idea, yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, because part of our rationale in terms of making it administratively easy is frankly, we want to put pressure on people to. Who aren't properly registered to get registered. They they ought to be chasing you down rather than you chasing them.
Right, yeah.
Right, I mean, they they should be timely in their renewals. You shouldn't have to be chasing them down. I mean, like, yeah, they get like a notice, and if they don't, they get another notice that says. Hey, if you don't fill out this paperwork in this time. Your license will be null and void.
Mm hmm.
The next person on the waiting list will be able to take that advantage.
Yeah, well, yeah, and and I think that's exactly right that, you know, I was uh talking about this with Jeff is that I don't think that that most of these people who are unlicensed or only partially are doing it out of. You know, mouths are are trying to break the rule. I believe most of them just don't know how to do it, because, you know, administratively, that that's the. Clarity has not been there, and this would help clarify that, and I I think the new position would also help administer more effectively.
Hmm. I think too, one of the things that that we plugged in was an occupancy limit, because part of the concern we had was folks. Living next to one of these houses and it gets rented out and all of a sudden there's.
You got a rave.
Twenty or thirty, yeah.
Yeah.
So rave or something like that. So, you know, some reasonable. Yeah, occupancy, you know, limit.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. You got that on the list, yeah.
But, you know, again, I think there's. There's issues that we're going to want to work through, and and one of my concerns is is again. Uh, speaking with with a private inspector who was at our our last meeting. He was saying. What do you want? You know, I mean, we inspect houses for real estate transactions, you know, we we inspect commercial. And industrial facilities to to certain standards. But what are the standards for a vacation rental?
Yeah, good question.
Yeah, and how, you know. Uh, maybe that is a question we we pose. To, I don't know, the building inspector, to the, you know, to the fire department, I.
Well, how it works looking, I don't think we've done this, is is there something in in state? Law or code? Like the landlord tenant. Provisions. That that would come to bear on this. Are you a landlord under the under the law? If you're a short term rental operator? I don't know. Be good to know that. Um, and then and then um. You know, do the do the platforms require an inspection? Um, before they'll list you? I don't know that either.
I don't, yeah.
Um.
And and how consistent are those requirements do? I mean, you may have some.
Yeah, I guess, again, one of the reasons that I haven't gotten all spun up about the inspection issues is that I got to believe that insurance companies are going to be fairly tough on people about this, like, you want to do what? That's going to cost you, um, and and you better meet these requirements if you, you know, if you're. If you plan to do this, I just can't imagine that insurance would say, oh, sure, it's fine, you know. There's a fire, there's not going to be a problem. I just, you know, insurance is tough, and they should be.
Yeah.
But it would be good to know, like, is does the does the state law or the building code have anything in it? That that will come to bear on.
Yeah, and we can go back and look at some of those ordinances on the coast and Hood River or White Salmon or. You know, here in the gorge, to see how they handle the the inspection uh aspect as well.
Hmm. Yeah, I don't know this about about Washington, but Oregon has what's called a, I used to work for the Home Builders Association, so. Oregon has what's called a minimum maximum building code, and that is. State state building codes division issues the building code. Cities and counties follow it, they don't get to do more, they don't get to do less. Keeps it simple. I don't know if Washington operates that way or not for construction. Um, if it's a if it's a minimum maximum code or whether municipalities and counties get to. Do things a little differently if they want to. I just don't know.
No home role.
Right, well, on that subject, at least in Oregon, there's no home role, as the building code division runs the show, you know, so that's, you know, that's one way to. One way to get clarity, but I don't know if that's the case here.
Well, I don't know. I mean, we are the building inspections are all done, you know, through the county.
Right, right.
Basically, so.
But the codes they're enforcing, I think, is state.
I I suspect it is.
Yeah, I believe so, but um, yeah, I'm I'm not sure.
County has little. Interpretive lenience.
Do they?
Yeah, I know that, you know, there's a pretty big difference between Schumania and Clickitah.
Hmm, hmm, okay.
Uh, and Clark probably even more so.
Hmm.
Well, that's something we can do some research on, to find out what those regulations are.
Right.
So, you know, if we're feeling terribly comfortable with this memo, we can, you know. I'd like to add some of this stuff we talked about.
Yeah, these quantitative items and the waiting list idea, I think that would, those would be great to add.
Yeah, so and then just. Ship it over to the city council.
Yeah, yeah, great.
Could we do that by Thursday? Could we get it? Could we get it on the agenda? I'm trying to do is keep the process kind of moving along.
Yeah, um.
I mean, it's more an informational item to them.
Yeah, I. Yeah, we still have. If you could get it to me by tomorrow, that would give us at least twenty four hours. Ideally, I'd like to get. The items to the council as soon as possible, or, you know, along with you all. Um, but I think since it's an informational and it's not to be voted on. I think that would be fine, so at least it's. At at least it it's in their inbox and they can uh read through it.
Yeah, I mean.
Were you thinking of going, Jeff, to the?
Yeah, I'll go, I'll go to the city council.
Go and say, hey, here it is, you know, and we'd love your reaction.
Yeah, just just a sense of the council, we're not looking for any formal action.
Yeah, yeah, um, I mean, well, it depends on if you want to make the changes. I I don't. Currently have the capacity this week to do that. If you're able to, then I'm I'm fine to send it. On and I I don't think council would mind, as long as then they don't have to make it, take action on.
Right.
Then.
Yeah, I I just, you know, if if we're if we wait until the the council meeting in in November.
Hmm.
You know, it's 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 getting out longer and longer. We've had these folks with us earlier.
Yeah.
This year, I just.
Yeah.
I would just like to keep it moving along if we can.
I like that, too.
Hmm.
Yeah. Any kind of noise.
Okay with that?
Good plan.
Anne, are are you still drinking Mai Tais?
No, I tried last night here, I fly tomorrow, so no. Um, no, but I appreciate, I, as I said earlier, you know, keep it, keeping the ball rolling and. And really taking this seriously and getting it, getting the information out there so we can, we can take the next step. I appreciate y'all doing that.
Great, thank you, Anne. So. With that, I think we're. We're done on this topic.
I'm losing, done for now, yeah, for now.
But unless you you did touch on. The sort of staffing situation for the planning department. You might want to just brief the the planning commission members of what you're thinking about.
Yeah, please do, and where you what where you headed on.
Yeah, so. Right now, we're in a bit of a tight spot, you know, staffing wise, because. Um, the same week Ben and Tiffany left, so currently the county is um, uh. Um, processing our permits and applications, so right now they're they're um. Dealing with that, and so right now we have publicized a a permit and records manager role. And so as I sort of touched on earlier, that role will. Be in charge of handling land use permits, applications. For anything that comes through in um, of handling them through cloud permit and also. Public records requests and then, which do take up a lot of time and before, didn't have someone dedicated solely to it. And then on any other, um, you know, uh, task that might follow in uh that scope. Um, we are looking to uh hire for a city planner position. This is something that. We were sort of going back and forth on. I I originally had a thought of it going to a contractor on a hard time basis, an expert. But after speaking with Jeff and Anne, uh, they gave me some really good feedback about about the importance of having a city planner. And so we are proposing to add that to the personnel policy, so so it it won't be as. Um, it it won't be the same position as Ben, which was the community. Development director, it'll be a bit scaled back, but the focus will. Will just be on land use.
Yeah.
Um, and so that we are still waiting on, I mean, on Thursday, we will send that to council for approval as long as. Therefore, but that's the staffing plan right now, and we're really moving quickly with the permit and records manager because we need support in this office, because. Right now, our, even with our public works director out, we're down to two people. Helping out the front desk and three people in the office total, which is just not enough. And I can tell it's it's frustrating for people when they come in and. Uh, you know, want timely service, so we're we're hoping to have that. Uh, a decision made on the permit and records manager role uh within the next two weeks.
Hmm. Yeah, when Anne and I met with Wes, you know, you know, our recommendation was. To fill a a a planner position here, largely because. You know, it's not that the, you know, that the county doesn't have planners on staff, they do, but. We have some fairly unique stuff here. I mean, our zoning ordinance is is different. We have a separate comprehensive plan. Is different, we have a separate comprehensive plan, we've got a separate shoreline management plan, and a recreation plan, and a downtown plan. And we have a lot of people that. Walk into this office, you know, and they wanna talk about, you know, planning issues, so it's it's maintaining a service, I think, to the. You know, it's the city providing the service to the city residents. Which I think is an important aspect.
Yeah, it's good, yeah, and so really, the way I was looking at it or in the roles is where. Ben was up here in in the high level and management, and Tiffany was here at the supporting role, is that they sort of meet in the middle. And and cuz I've, that's one thing I've heard since I started, is that. Customer service and process times for application departments are, you know, just too slow and that and that they need better customer support. And I think this will help do that, you know. But that's going on, I like I like that, I guess it's a good approach.
I'm not sure whether they think they're getting faster service, cuz that exists. But it's it's a matter of interpretation, I guess. Everyone would like things to happen quicker. You know, it's a process and needs to be followed, so. Instantaneous responses sometimes.
Right, well, I. Yeah, no, I I completely take your point, I, one thing I think though, that that will be important and. Will cut back on a lot of the misunderstandings and discrepancies, is I will really push the new city planner to have. Pre-application meetings and to sit down and make sure that all of the regulations and and what's. Required of them for the construction is laid out explicitly upfront, cuz I know that, I don't know, perhaps it gets lost in translation or. Uh, I'm not sure, but but, you know, some folks feel along the way. That the goalpost has been moved for what they need to do to to fulfill their permit, and so I don't. I don't want that to be the case, I want us to be here to to help people through it, I think that's a good way to start it.
Yeah, I I sure agree, I mean, you know, all the time I've spent working with land use and land use planners. It's the ones that are out there doing those sort of pre-application things, I mean. I mean, how many folks are frustrated where they've invested their time and their effort and their money, and they hired engineers or architects? And they come in with a proposal. And then it doesn't fit the land use regulations, and that all could have been worked around.
Due diligence, I think it's. Perhaps are the right way to go.
And letting the letting the community know that that's a service that's available too.
And and I, I don't know if you're planning to charge for pre-apps or not, it's worth it if you do, I mean, you know, it's like. Pay now or pay later, pay less now. It's like, so whether whether there's a fee associated with a pre-app or not, is a decision you can make, but.
Well, and and also pay a lot more in frustration down the line too, I bet if, I've I've heard plenty of stories, so. Yeah, I'm sure people would, and I welcome, I think so.
Yeah, like Jeff said, I mean, engineers, architects, you know, are expensive and sore construction materials, and so, you know, you get. You get down the road and then get a, then get a no, it's much more expensive than if you figure it out to find.
Not just more expensive, just much more frustrating. Emotionally, it's.
Those sound like good moves, Wes, that sounds great.
Anything else?
We have any old business other than this.
August, anything?
No, I think we can probably adjourn early.
Ann, anything?
Nothing for me, and it's almost ten o'clock here, so this is great.
Well, safe travels tomorrow, it's.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
It's nice and brisk here, it's not anywhere near the mid eighties.
No, are you in Florida?
I know, I'm ready for fall weather, so it works for me.
We're here on Saint Saint Thomas?
Yeah, we're in Saint Thomas in the Virgin Islands.
Joy, and I hope you did enjoy, I'll remind me to tell you my Saint Thomas story when you get back, I have a fun one.
I can't wait, Charlie, yeah, it's been two weeks, so we're ready to come home, but it's been a fantastic time.
Is there a motion to adjourn? You have a motion? You have a motion in a second, all those in favor, we stand adjourned.
Good meeting, Wes.
Thank y'all.